Okay, everybody, welcome to Scranton City Council's regular caucus. It is Tuesday, May 19th, 2020, 5:45 PM. I just want to go through the room really quick so we could identify who is with us today. We have Councilman Kyle Donahue, Councilman Mark McCandrew, Dr. Rothschild, we have Councilman Schuster, we have our council solicitor Kevin Hayes, we also have our city clerk Lori Reed, we have Mayor Cognetti here with us tonight, we also have Eileen Cipriani, who is the OECD Director or potentially going to be the OECD Director. And we also have Jim Lockwood here from the Scranton Times. So first of all, I hope everybody's doing well and your families are safe and healthy during this pandemic. We are going to start off the discussion tonight as has been communicated to everyone with Mayor Cognetti. The purpose of Mayor Cognetti being here tonight is to discuss the waiver that is on our agenda for Eileen Cipriani to be the OECD Director. So Mayor Cognetti, I want to thank you for coming and thank you, Mrs. Cipriani, for coming. And Mayor Cognetti, I'll turn it over to you if you want to make some opening remarks.
Nice to see everybody. Tom, I like that background. You definitely win the prize for the best background. I realize it's actually your home and not a background, but so it's good to see everybody. I am very excited this week to have a couple of new people starting with Amber Viola and Eileen Cipriani starting yesterday. It was, we had our managers meeting yesterday and while it's also a Brady Bunch style of, you know, boxes on the screen, it felt, it felt good to have someone in that HR Director role finally after, you know, months of us searching and, and months of Mayor Evans having to do without as well. So that's a real relief for, for all of us here in management to have Amber starting. It's very exciting. And then with Eileen Cipriani today, you know, come before you today to introduce Eileen to you. I would be excited to introduce Eileen to you and to the city at any time. However, given the situation that we're in with fighting this pandemic and looking, not even looking at a recession, but I think we know we are, we are in one and it's going to be really painful for a lot of the families and many of the businesses in our city. So the, the timing of Eileen joining this team could not be better in a very difficult time. Already in two working days, Eileen has connected with people all over the state that can help Scranton find avenues for funding, find different ways that we can pitch for, you know, maybe more flexible rules with the Liquor Control Board, for example, as we look to open up some of those city streets this summer. She's looking at intern programs and how we can get those types of things funded. And, you know, working with the OECD team to lay out where, where we've been and where we can go all toward developing with, with me and with all of you, with the community, a strategic plan that we can really use to guide all of our decision-making in the, the coming weeks and months and years. So it's a tremendous opportunity to have Eileen with us who has the experience to do that with us here in the city. And I just couldn't be more excited that she's here, A, at any time, but B, especially given the unfortunate circumstances we find ourselves in. So I'll give Eileen a chance to introduce herself to you. And you guys can get to know each other a little. Eileen, you're on mute, I think.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the introduction. And Council, it's a pleasure to meet all of you and, and see an old face in the, in the room. Solicitor, it's very good to see you, Kevin. It's been a long time since I've seen you. But thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight. And really, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to, to come to Scranton and to work in this administration. I've heard nothing but good things about the council and the mayor, so I think it's a really good opportunity. So I come to you with, last five years I've spent in Harrisburg with the part of Governor Wolf's administration. Most recently, the Deputy Secretary for Workforce Development at the Department of Labor and Industry. So it gives me a really good advantage to come in and talk in the economic development world because we worked hand in glove with the Department of Community and Economic Development in Harrisburg. You can't have economic development without workforce development. So I spent a tremendous amount of time traveling the state. So I had an opportunity to meet so many different members of communities all across the state and see projects going on from one end of the state to the other. And there's some remarkable projects going around the state that I would love to, to bring here to Northeastern Pennsylvania and Scranton because there is so much good that we could all do together in the city of Scranton. You know, right now, when you look at the times that we're in right now, I mean, I, I know everyone is, you know, there's such a level of concern and fear for our economy, for our health, for our, for our well-being. So we need to all pull together and really make sure that we take advantage of any opportunities that come from the federal government and come from the state government. And I feel I'm uniquely positioned with the contacts that I have made through my work in the state government. And as the Deputy Secretary for Workforce Development, I was actually fully funded by the federal government. So our interconnectivity with the federal government was very strong in, in that department. And we, we, just like the, the office that I'm in now, we dealt with federal money. So we have a very strong background in how federal government operates and how state government operates. And as the mayor said, in my role, I, I do know where a lot of good programs are going on and I do know where a lot of the funding is going on. So it's a way to connect the dots and reach out and, and make that quicker connection that maybe it'd be a little harder to make without my experience and my qualifications. Other thing I want to point out is you, you may not know this about me, but I sat in a seat similar to yours. I spent nine years on West Wyoming Borough Council. So I know exactly what it feels like to be in a council member seat and know what an important job that is. But one other thing I want, want to make sure that you understand about how, how I think and, and I believe the mayor is completely on board with this. What we want to do is put together a strategic plan for economic development, workforce development, community development, and engage partners in there. And one of the, the key partners to putting that plan together is to have city council as a, a part of the plan and part of the steering committee so that we could really come up with a solid plan to move Scranton forward and to navigate this, you know, this perilous time that we're going to be going through. So if anybody has any question that I could answer, I'd be more than happy to answer that or let you get on with your meeting.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor or Mrs. Cipriani? Am I pronouncing your name right? Cipriani, correct?
That's correct.
Does any of the council members have any questions for Mayor Cognetti or Mrs. Cipriani in regards to the waiver or anything in regard to the appointment? Mrs. Cipriani, I have one question for you and you touched on this a little bit, but you know, what would be some of the goals that you would have for the Office of Economic and Community Development? So if, you know, you, you end up getting the waiver approved and you are appointed as the OECD Director, fast forward two years, what would you have liked to accomplish as the Director?
Well, one thing I would really like Scranton to be known as the business community of Northeastern Pennsylvania, the most business-friendly community of Northeastern Pennsylvania. It's really important to, right now, it's going to be really important to retain the businesses. So you really want to track, do some metrics, I'm really big into metrics, track how many businesses we're able to retain here and following that with how many jobs that we're able to retain here. You have a strong education and medical presence, but I think it's also important to look to diversify that, to make sure that you have a solid background that, that sort of recession proves you because you would have a broad industry portfolio throughout the city. And it's not just about jobs, it's about quality jobs, right? I think it's really important that we, there really doesn't appear to be a workforce, a strong workforce component. We need to make sure that we have that so that we could train the citizens of Scranton and give them the best opportunities that there are. You have how many higher ed educations right in the city? I mean, that's a phenomenal resource, but that needs to be linked completely with economic development and workforce development and the community development. It needs to work hand in glove throughout the city, throughout the county and throughout the region. There's a phenomenal amount of potential with the amount of federal dollars right now that are being put out there. But the idea would be to bring them in and strategically have a plan where you build on top of each other like building blocks.
Right. And that's connecting all of the educational resources with the economic development resources. I think you all know in the city of Scranton, we've been missing that economic development and workforce piece for quite some time. If you read the letter that I wrote to you last week, you see that Act 47 exit plan language. Years ago, Jerry Cross has said, and he's repeated by saying, you've got to get somebody in economic development. You have to get that internal capacity for economic development. So it's part of the Act, the Act 47 exit plan. And, you know, sitting here, I can see Lackawanna College, I can almost see the medical college. University of Scranton, we've got Johnson. We have all these incredible institutions that do everything from, you know, the technical training to all the way up to producing doctors. So someone, not someone, Eileen specifically, in the entire state can come in and start working with Jill Murray at Lackawanna College, Dolars at University of Scranton, and Katie Leonard at Johnson and get, get all of that to work so that we're working together and along with the school district and the other, the schools, the parochial schools, working to figure out how we're pitching kids go into the jobs that are available. And we want the ability of jobs to be on a diverse spectrum. Everybody who wants to be a teacher or a firefighter to also maybe some of those other jobs where they need to go get some training at a law school and come back. But we've got it, we, we all know, everyone on this, on this Zoom tonight, you guys, we all know how much Scranton needs more of these quality jobs and to better match the training with the jobs. Eileen is uniquely qualified statewide to help us see that through. And it's a tremendous opportunity for us here in the city to have Eileen join the team. You know, we, on the Pell call, I think, you know, Councilperson Donahue, you remember when I mentioned Eileen's name, Jerry was, was excited. He certainly knows Eileen and thought that that was a tremendous gain for the city to have her coming on board. I've gotten lots of phone calls from DCED to commend, commend us for being able to bring on Eileen. So it's a real opportunity and I did, I did want to leave you with a couple of examples of things that we do here. So one being matching that workforce opportunity with education. And Eileen, you would be able to speak much better than I can on that. The other piece would be the, the one-stop shop. So something Eileen mentioned was that I've said to you guys a lot in the community, we had to make it easier to business in Scranton. Right now, you have contractors all over the region that would like to do business here, but they, they won't because it's too cumbersome to get through the Department. We've made great strides. Tom Olefsky's done a great job since he's been Acting Director to, to, to start to do that. COVID has in some ways helped us because it's accelerated our move online permitting. So we're really getting somewhere. To make it easy to do business in Scranton, we have to have that streamlined, bringing OEC and lists and the fire department, everyone under the same hood so that you know where to go. Eileen ran a program to split the state, so I think we should kind of just mention that quickly.
Sure, sure. Bobbing a, bobbing a, I'm bouncing back a little bit. A project.
Does anybody else have any problem with audio? Yeah, Mayor, you, when you're speaking, it's a little, I don't know, is it, it's like feedback or something, right, Tom? Is that what you're hearing?
Let me, it's.
I, I, I didn't hear most of what Mayor Cognetti said or the start of Mrs. Cipriani.
Just now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Yeah, I can hear you, Mrs. Cipriani. Can you hear her now, Tom?
This is a little better, a second please.
It still seems to be freezing. Is that, is that me on my end or is it on her end?
No, I said, I could see her, the mayor freezing a little bit on her screen.
Okay. I'd say I got most of it, but it was real choppy.
Okay, let me try to, to log in differently.
Mrs. Cipriani, I think you were okay though, if you want to keep going.
So the project that the mayor's talking about was Business One Stop. And in the context of the, the state, when you're, you're putting together a business, you need the Department of State, you need the Department of Labor and Industry, you need the Department of Community and Economic Development. And there's little checkboxes along the way of tasks that you need to complete. What we did was we pulled that together in what we refer to as the Business One Stop Plan. So if you think of that for, for Scranton, right now, this week, I'm, two individuals approached me just this week to help them make some connectivities for apprenticeship programs to businesses. So this office with myself in it would be uniquely positioned to be able to say, yes, I know someone that could help you start an apprenticeship program. I actually know where you could find grant funding for an apprenticeship program and bring that to, to businesses as one stop. And the other thing I had mentioned to the, the mayor is this concept of sort of shepherding businesses. Because that business needs someone to go back to when they're stuck. If they're, they're stuck in a department in the city or they're just stuck at the county, if they could come back to that one stop and, and that person can help them get over that obstacle to move forward. Nothing's more frustrating to businesses than to run into bureaucracy along the way. So to be able to be that piece of the puzzle that, that could move businesses forward. And as I said when I started, to be business friendly. We're open for business and we want businesses to come here. And more importantly, right now, we need them to stay here.
With that being said, Mrs. Cipriani, what ways are you thinking, moving into the future to, to assist with our small businesses that are, you know, having some trouble through this situation? Maybe keeping some of them open that may close their doors?
Sure. Actually, we've identified some, some funding from the SBA. So we're working on putting a plan together right now. Right now, we think it's going to be loan funding if we can make it grant funding. We certainly will, but I, we need to follow the, the rules of it and put that out to help them because they need that bridge. You know, a lot of them applied for PPP, not everybody got it, and that's really not enough money for everybody. I know, I talked to the Lackawanna County today. There were so many applicants for that grant funding, it took their server down right off the bat. So we know the need is tremendous. The city is right now doing a survey so that they could get feedback from the businesses so that we could find those niches where the funding that's coming down from the federal government is maybe missing the mark. I know that the, the first round of funding, people weren't able to buy inventory. So if they were, business going to open back up, a restaurant, say, they, they didn't have inventory to start opening back up and that wouldn't fund that. So that's what we're looking at right off the bat. We will be getting the COVID-19 funding in, that's, we got guidance on that today. So we'll be pulling that together as well. So there are some things coming where they're in the queue.
Yeah, and I would, just to, to talk a little bit more about that. So I believe early last week, we sent out the small business survey and that part of it's that question, would you rather have a grant or a loan? If a grant, how big, how, well, obviously, everybody wants a large grant, but would you rather have a $25,000 to $5,000 grant? Or would you rather take out a $10,000 to $20,000 loan, for example? So we're trying, we're trying to be thoughtful and see what businesses need. Inventory is a huge piece of that, that some of these businesses that have not been able to be open, the PPP was not, is not, as at least as it is today, the right thing for somebody who maybe hasn't been able to be open. I think the federal government, I know the Treasury Secretary was on today talking about some modifications to that. But what we need to do here in the city is figure out where we can fill those gaps. So Eileen's taken the baton on that and is, is running with it. And what's been really fun already is that Eileen has so many contacts throughout the state that we, we already, I was, I was looking at different, you know, talking with different mayors around the state about what we could do. Eileen has a lot of those relationships, far and away more than, than I could ever possibly have at this point. So we really can see some of these models that are built, both in the short term for, to your question, Councilperson Schuster, what is the short-term pain that we can relieve? What are those, those longer-term plans look like? But it remains really, really difficult. There are a lot of businesses that are truly suffering out there and having Eileen start right now this week to help us see what we can do is, is just critical.
Thanks to Councilwoman Schuster for that question because that was actually the same question I was going to ask about. You know, we, we're very concerned about our, our small businesses in the city of Scranton. But there was another question I had too for Ms. Cipriani. I'm Chair of the Committee for Community Development and you had mentioned wanting to work closely with council, which I appreciate. And you having been in one of those positions in the past. So I just wanted to make sure that you'd be okay with maybe regular calls or meetings with myself as, as Chair so that I can stay up to date on, on what we're doing in OECD.
Absolutely. And I certainly would like to have you involved even at a greater level than that, depending on your capacity and your time. We certainly could use all the input that you, you know, that you could offer us.
Yeah, I'm happy to be as involved as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild and Councilwoman Schuster. Does anybody else have any questions for the mayor or for Mrs. Cipriani? Okay, I don't think anybody has any other questions. So I want to thank you, Mayor Cognetti and Mrs. Cipriani for coming tonight and we will talk to you soon.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, everybody, that takes care of that part of the agenda. So just want to mention a few things here. We do, we are going to have on our agenda next week the legislation that would limit the administration from increasing any salaries outside of the budget. If there was a case where the mayor or her administration were going to do that or any future mayor or administration, that they would have to come before council. The same goes for if they were going to create a job classification outside of the budget. So I know everyone has reviewed that. We did send it to the administration for their comments. They did not provide any as of this afternoon. So that will be on the agenda to be introduced next week. Okay? Does anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay, good. The only other thing I had was in terms of public comment, and I'm going to mention this in the regular meeting, Mrs. Schumacher, as everyone has know, everyone knows, has posed several questions over the last few weeks. And what I have done is any questions that were relevant to the administration that they could best answer or department-specific, I had forwarded, as all of you know, to the mayor and her administration in those specific departments. One question that she had concerning the Pennsylvania Economy League was answered. It was emailed to Ms. Schumacher. And I know Mr. Cross from the Pennsylvania Economy League gave her his cell phone number in case she had any additional questions on that specific information. I don't have anything else. The only thing I want to flip it over to Lori, do you have anything? Want to add?
Thank you, Councilwoman Gahn. Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Solicitor Hayes, do you have anything before I turn it over to the council members?
No, I don't, not this time.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue, do you have anything?
Solicitor Hayes, I forgot to mention this when we talked before, but have we gotten anywhere with regards to the PA American Water rate hike?
As far as I know, they have not announced the public input process, but I will follow up on that. I know that there, there is one that was, is taking place in early June, but that is for another utility rate increase. So I don't know, I will follow up on that.
Thank you. Anything else, Kyle?
Thank you. No, that's all I have right now.
Okay. Councilman McCandrew, do you have anything?
I just want to give Mr., Solicitor Hayes a head up. Under motions, and this is week four of asking for the billable hours of the Acting Superintendent, I'm sorry, the Acting HR Director. So, you know, outside of asking, doing a right to know, which would be ridiculous, could you please subpoena that information for me?
And I, we can, we have a subpoena power. The only problem we may have at this point in time is if the bills don't exist because they haven't been submitted, then, then that would be the response we receive. And that was the explanation that I had last week was that Solicitor Offburg's office was in such a position that they did not generate the bill yet and submit to the city and wasn't available, that's why it wasn't available. But I, I will, I will follow up with that request and we do have the ability to subpoena.
Okay. I understand maybe the bill hasn't been generated, but the hours have been, I mean, this is the fourth week, so I want, I wanted the information before four weeks ago. So the past four weeks, if, if, if the Acting HR Director worked 40 hours a week for the past four weeks at $89 an hour, that's a third of the budgeted salary for the HR Director. So I don't even know how many hours it would be prior to that. So this is, you know, I think the taxpayers need to know how much this is costing them. So thank you for your help. I'll, I'll bring it up under motions, so, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilman McCandrew?
No, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, any, anything you want to bring up?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Schuster?
First, the connection issue. Am I, are you guys able to hear me or?
Yeah, I can hear you now. You were just a little bit choppy before. And the mayor was too, until she switched her connection.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to figure out whose connection that was, whether it was hers or mine. I'd like to fix it before the meeting, but it seems okay now. Actually, to piggyback off, off of what Mark just said, and I kind of wish the mayor was back here now, but I didn't think about it until, until after he had said that, was, um, did we get a time when the, um, the current HR Director will be ending billing of hours? Are they staying on for some time or any kind of clarification, how the transition would go with HR?
Yeah, I, I don't know that for sure, but I, I think that's a good question and maybe one that we want to put in writing if you want to make a motion to that effect tonight to send, if you want to send correspondence to council to get a, a date on which the Acting HR Director will be parting ways. I'm assuming that it will be when Ms. Viola takes over as the new HR Director, but I'm not, I'm not positive on that.
And, uh, Councilman Schuster, I agree, that issue was raised in a telephone conference I had with the mayor's chief of staff and Solicitor. And the explanation that was provided to me was that she would be, Mrs. Leo would be getting phased out of that role now that there's a, upon appointment of the new HR Director. However, she will lend, you know, litigation support and other support to Solicitor Offburg in his role as a labor solicitor. But if you want a formal date, that could be requested. But that was the explanation that was provided to me.
Okay, if you guys think that would be helpful, yeah, I could, I could request that.
Sorry, just got kicked out. What did I miss there, Tom?
If you guys feel that would be helpful, I'll, I could request that correspondence as for an end date of the current HR Director.
Yeah, that's fine.
Definitely, thanks, Tom.
Anything else, Mr. Schuster?
No, that's all.
Okay. The only other thing, I reached out to Wayne Beck, the city treasurer, this week. I don't know if anyone else has gotten calls on this, but apparently some residents are paying their garbage bill online. And obviously, they're within the discount period, so they're paying $270. And after they pay it, it's still showing that they owe a balance of $30. So Wayne Beck got back to me and said that they had similar issues last year and he was going to look into that. So just in case anybody gets calls from anyone who may be paying their garbage bills online, he is, they are looking into that and they are going to get back to me. The other thing I'm going to bring up tonight too is in terms of ATVs, I've been getting just absolutely crushed with emails, phone calls regarding ATVs really in every part of the city. Specifically though, on East Mountain, there seems to be a lot of trouble up there. So I did talk earlier today to Solicitor Hayes and he's going to look into, first of all, our current laws that we have on the book in, in terms of ATVs and then what we might be able to do to possibly bolster these. We also, you know, may want to have, have a conversation, Mark, and this is where you will come in with, as Public Safety Chair with Chief Graziano. In terms of enforcement, I understand that, and this is what I've explained to people, that, you know, the police can't chase people who are on ATVs for obvious reasons, safety reasons. But as I said, I, you know, I can't ignore the, the calls and emails that I'm getting because it, it seems to be a major issue. So, so we'll look into that.
Mr. Gahan, could I jump in there a second?
Sure.
You're bringing up ATVs. I was going to also bring up ATVs today too because I did get several calls from East Mountain. I got some pictures and video as well, and they're bringing Jeeps and trucks and cars back in there at this point too. I was told when they staged the air. I was told when they staged the area at the bottom of East Mountain Road in Mulkey, they were using that, that little dirt patch there, I think, that leads down into the pipeline, that new pipeline was put in there along the railroad tracks. And they didn't move the concrete barriers back. So at this point, it's a space big enough for larger vehicles like trucks to get in. And that's how a lot of these vehicles are getting in. So it might be a good idea to see if it's in our purview to have someone maybe move in some concrete barriers in there.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that. That might be a solution. And, you know, I understand that people who have ATVs want to ride them around, and that's fine. But it seems that, you know, some of these people are just not courteous at all. Like I know, especially on East Mountain, there's at least two or three people that reach out to me who have medical issues, who literally are like being terrorized by these things. So, you know, as I said, Kevin's going to look into what's currently on the books, and then we should have a conversation with Chief Graziano. And I know they're getting calls, too. And that there may be only so much now that, that they can do, and we should look into how they maybe can force it, or maybe we can give them some more tools or put a little more teeth in the ordinance. So.
I, I agree. I think that would be helpful. And like you said, it's, it's a problem all around the city. I've heard complaints in the past, and not only that, but it's probably in my neighborhood. There's an alley pretty close by to my house, and they ride up and down it and around the block. And you hear it all day long. And it's, it's definitely a disturbance. So, you know, in addition to addressing the specific problems in East Mountain, I think it'd be helpful to get the police involved. And even if they can't chase after them, they could still find out who's doing it and go to the properties and speak to either the parents, because I mean, there's children riding on them. It's, you know, it's not necessarily adults doing this, too. So.
Right, I agree.
I also, maybe possibly another angle to look at, too. I know in North Scranton, they've complained about it for years because they're riding on the dike. And I think some of the concern there was maybe taking away inches off the top of the dike there for the flood, for our flood plan there. Might be another angle to look at it, too, in that section of the city.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. And it really isn't just, you know, to one section. It's, it's North Scranton, East Mountain, Manuka, it's South Side, West Side, it's, it's all over the place. So.
While we're waiting, Solicitor Hayes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I know I had a short conversation about possibly payment of income tax. Maybe it was stated that business manager Sharon was paying income tax into the city. Has this at all been mentioned with Mrs. Cipriani?
Bill, Councilman Gunn, my understanding is the business, current business administrator captured and agreed to pay the city's income tax. That's correct, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Mrs. Reed, didn't we receive, I believe we received some sort of correspondence from him? Is that correct?
I have to go back in the, in the file and check just to confirm that.
Okay, yeah, I'm almost positive that we did, Tom. I'd have to go back and look, but I would, I'm confident in saying that he did.
Now, was that something that was voluntary or?
On the voluntary, yep.
My recollection is that in the past, other cabinet appointees who had lived outside the, the city had agreed to pay the wage tax. I think that was the case in Business Administrator Bolzoni, and I remember former Director of Public Works, George Parker, had agreed to do, do that as well. It's my, it's my understanding.
Right. Has that all been discussed with the appointment of Mrs. Cipriani?
No, as far as I'm, as far as I'm aware, no one has, no one has brought that up. So, I mean, if that's something that we want to request as a council, and certainly I'm open to that, Councilman Schuster.
Yeah, I think it'd be something to explore. I don't know what the, what the best method to get to that would be.
Well, I think what you can do if you want is just in fifth order in motions, you can make a motion to request that council send a letter to the mayor asking, asking that Mrs. Cipriani do that. And, you know, we'll see where that goes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
When, when are the six months up for the business administrator?
I believe that was, so he got appointed in January. So would that be June, June or July? Yeah, so that's coming up.
Okay. And have we received any word on, on his position?
We have not. The last that I talked to the mayor in regards to that was a few months ago, and it was supposed to be a temporary. Well, as you know, I think she was even in the caucus and stated that. So that may be something that we want to, we want to revisit.
Yeah, that's the assumption that I was under. And, you know, now that we're getting a waiver request for one employee, I'm wondering if we're going to be receiving one for him, or if she'll be looking for another person, as she I think said that she would, when we last spoke to her about it. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can inquire about that as well.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. Anybody else? Okay, it is 6:21, so we will reconvene here at 6:30 and we'll start our regular meeting. Okay? Thanks, everybody. Okay, everyone, welcome to our Tuesday, May 19, 2020, regular Scranton City Council meeting. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. As we have been the past few months, let us take a special moment of silence again tonight for all of those in our community and throughout the world who are suffering or who have passed away from the coronavirus. Let us think about them and their families at this time, that they may find peace. Let us think about the doctors, nurses, researchers, and all medical professionals and first responders who seek to heal and help those affected, and who put themselves at risk in the process. May they find protection and peace. Whether we are home or abroad, surrounded by many people suffering from this illness or only a few, let us stick together, endure together, mourn together, persist and prepare together. And in place of our anxiety, let us continue to hope and find peace. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Carrera, roll call, please.
President?
Mr. McAndrew?
President?
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Carrera. Please note that there will be a motion to move item 6A to seventh order for a final vote this evening. Mrs. Reed, please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Thank you. Third order, 3A, proclamation issued by Mayor Page G. Cagnetti dated May 8, 2020, postponing the date of the city treasurer's sale for the collection of delinquent taxes from June 1, 2020 until September 1, 2020. 3B, correspondence sent from Scranton City Council dated May 12, 2020 to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection regarding Keystone Sanitary Landfill Phase 3 Site Development Application. 3C, proclamation issued by Mayor Page G. Cagnetti dated May 11, 2020, extending the state of emergency in the city of Scranton. 3D, emergency declaration issued by Mayor Page G. Cagnetti dated May 12, 2020, extending the state of emergency to June 8, 2020. 3E, check received from Comcast in the amount of $260,513.97 for quarterly franchise fee. 3F, minutes of the historical architecture review board meeting held April 23, 2020. 3G, controllers report for month ending April 30, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Are there any comments on any of the third order items? I just have one. In terms of public comment, we did receive questions about the controllers' report from Mrs. Schumacher. So we are going to forward that to the administration. One was in regards to a street, street lighting lease. And one was in regards to CDW government and an expense that was made by the IT department. So we'll get an answer on that. Any other comments? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time? Okay, I have two announcements tonight, similar to the announcement I make every week since we started having our meetings in Zoom. If anyone would like to comment on agenda items or city business, please send those comments in writing to our city clerk Lori Reed by emailing lreid@scrantonpa.gov. Council will accept public comment until the day of our meeting, Tuesday at 4:30 PM. Public comment is reviewed by the council prior to our meeting and is placed on the official record and in the minutes of our meetings. Council's agenda is being posted for public review the Friday before our Tuesday meeting. Our agenda and minutes can be accessed by going to www.scrantonpa.gov and clicking on the city council page. Also, final announcement, DPW is going to be off next Monday, May 25, for the Memorial Day holiday. Refuse and newspaper collection will be one day behind next week. And that's all I have. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you, Councilman Gunn. Just to double check back with you, were all third order items received and filed?
Yes, all third order items were received and filed.
Thank you. Fourth orders for the team's participation.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. I would, I would ask now that someone please make a motion to accept public comment from the following individuals, Fay Frannis and Marie Schumacher?
Same.
Okay, on the question, on the question, Mrs. Frannis had submitted several questions related to the appointment of Mrs. Cipriani tonight. I had talked prior to the meeting with Solicitor Hayes, and Solicitor Hayes, you know, you can, if you can research her questions, Mrs. Francis's questions, and then provide a response by next week. I would appreciate that. Sorry, you renewed it.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. And Mrs. Schumacher, again, as I mentioned in the caucus, had submitted several questions. So we are going to forward those to the, the proper department. I do have one of the answers. I just don't have it right in front of me now, so I will forward that over to her. And then hopefully we get some answers. I do know that the administration did respond to one of her questions and is working on the others. Does anyone else have any comment? Okay, there's been a motion made. There's been on the question, all those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Mrs. Reed?
Fifth order, five motions.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, I have a couple. So we talked in caucus a little bit about the ATVs. I don't know if the caucus went public at this point in time, but probably have to state that again, correct?
It was public, but you can state it again.
So I did get a call with some pictures, some video from over on East Mountain, and one of the, the sections there, they, they used a place at the bottom of Mulkey and East Mountain Road for staging while they're doing the pipeline and possibly for 81. And the concrete dividers that keep vehicles out of that area have been moved to where cars and ATVs could get in. So we're exploring some of the options that we could take there with ATVs in several sections of the city. And also, we stated about the, the flood project in North Scranton, or I stated about the flood project in North Scranton, and maybe some of those ATVs were taken some of the topsoil off the top of the flood plain, or to flood the dams there. So that's a possibility. I also wanted to request that council send correspondence to, to the, the administration to see if we can get a written response for a date of, an end date for the current HR director before the, the new HR director takes, takes that position. As well as to send a letter to the mayor requesting a tax payment from Mrs. Cipriani. And one other thing, we did get an email about the polling places, the fire stations, one of them being the fire station in North Scranton on, on West Market Street, and the other one, the East Mountain Fire Station. Do we know, or do we get any answer as to whether those polling stations will be open on Election Day?
You know, Tom, that's a good question. I had, I was actually going to bring this up as well. The county has sent, and I think it came from John Frederickson.
Yes.
Yeah, he had sent a, a letter that is basically saying that, that the mayor has made a decision to close Ward 21 and Ward 123, the firehouses that you just mentioned, in terms of voting in the presidential primary election. I don't know how the mayor is able to do that, to be quite honest with you, this close to an election. And I think John Frederickson is making the same argument here. So that the Board of Elections is requesting that she reconsider her decision to close the two city firehouses to the voters on June 2, and allow them to serve as polling places as they have for the past three decades. I would tend to agree with that. And if you want, I think we can send correspondence to the mayor trying to get a, you know, explanation as to why that was done.
Yeah, that would be good.
Anything else, Mr. Schuster?
No, I think that's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilman McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do, Mr. Councilman Gahan. I apologize, I was unable to unmute myself during a moment of silence, but two gentlemen from the city passed away last week. One was Billy Boquillo. He worked for the Single Tax Office for 21 years, and Lieutenant James Taggart of the Scranton Fire Department. So please let them know that they're, you know, they're in our hearts and prayers. Secondly, also today, as chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I'd like to say that I had the great pleasure today at noon to watch the Scranton Police Department virtual memorial. It was very moving. It was honoring our fallen police officers that made the ultimate sacrifice. The inscription at the base of the monument pretty much sums it all up, integrity, courage, and honor. So great job, Chief Graziano, the Memorial Committee, and the Scranton Police Department. Secondly, also, we discussed in caucus, it's no secret, I've been asking for the billable hours of the acting HR director for the past four weeks and the hours prior to the past four weeks. So what I said in caucus was, what, what is our recourse? Because I'm waiting four weeks. And so if, if that person, the acting HR director, worked 40 hours a week for the past four weeks, not including the prior weeks, that would, at $89 an hour, which is, which is a lot of money, would be like 14 grand or so, which would be a third of the budgeted salary for Ms. Viola. So, so Solicitor Hayes said the possibility of a subpoena. I mean, I, I don't think I should have to do a right to know, which is, I mean, I asked, you know, I think a reasonable question and a reasonable amount of time. So with that said, please, Solicitor Hayes, please explore that for me so we can, so we can get this information to the taxpayer. I'm not the only one asking. There's, there's people coming up to me in the community, taxpayers, asking, you know, what's going on here. So please do that for me.
I will.
Thank you. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McAndrew. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have, I have one comment tonight that I wanted to offer, and I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Ward for the work that she's done as OC Director. I think that she has done a great job. And I'm really appreciative for what she's done for the city and the fact that she will be continuing to stay with the that she will be continuing to stay with the city as Assistant Director, I think is great, too. I think we're lucky to have her. So I was happy to see that, and just wanted to make a note of that. And I know that we will be discussing the residency waiver that's on for our legislation. And I had just a few comments about that. I do believe that from our conversations and seeing the resume of Ms. Cipriani, that she is highly qualified for the position. And she does have connections that are unique and that we perhaps not have not had, and knowledge of a lot of grants that will be useful for the city. So I was excited to see her. Obviously, she does not live in the city of Scranton, and while that is problematic, I've been a little confused in the past on the residency requirement that we have. I feel like maybe it's an outdated ordinance. I haven't really heard of a lot of other places, cities, municipalities, that have that same sort of legislation still. And I would hate to, I think, lose out on such a great candidate for the position just because of that. You know, I don't think that she's going to put any less effort into her job because of it. Yeah, I don't think she would work harder if she lived in the city of Scranton. So, you know, I think that I will be supporting her in that position, and I'm excited to have the opportunity to work with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Councilman Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, just a couple quickly. Miss Reed, would we be able to send the following addresses over to licensing inspections to go and look out? I've gotten some complaints on both of them. One is 2041, 2043 Margaret Ave. And then the other is 1068 Cottage Avenue. Just some quality of life issues there. And will we be able to request another update on the progress of the Sorente Center as well? I think we sent that out a couple of weeks ago, and I don't think we've gotten anything back, to my knowledge. And then another request is a status update on the contract with Northeast Revenue and where the administration is with that. And could we also request the paving list for this year, and to see when an RFP or RFQ will go out for the city's paving program? I could put all this in an email, too, so we don't miss anything.
Kyle, I'm sorry, I think Mrs. Reed got knocked off the call for a second.
Okay, I'll put it in an email to her, but just so, you know, those are the requests I'll be putting in. And that's all I have.
I'm sorry, my call dropped. I'm sorry, I have 2041, 43 Margaret and 1068 Cottage Ave. to the Lips Department, and I'm sorry, I wasn't on the call after that.
That, I was just looking for a status update for the Sorente Center project, or progress. Then the status update on the Northeast Avenue contract.
Okay, will do.
I could take care of the Northeast Revenue Contract. That's something that I've been trying to obtain information on, for the request of Councilman Gahan, so I'll follow up on that issue.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few comments. I mentioned in the caucus about a resident reaching out to me regarding the garbage bills and paying the garbage bills online. So I just want to state this at the public meeting in case anyone else is experiencing the same type of issue. The woman who reached out to me had paid her garbage bill online, $2.70 with a discount. And after she paid it, it was still showing that she owed $30. So I did reach out to the city treasurer. He did state that they had some similar issues to this last year, and he was going to get back to me. So if any council members get calls on that, or anyone from the public is watching, and that has happened, that is being, that is being looked into. Councilman Schuster mentioned the ATVs. I, too, have gotten a lot of calls on this issue. So in the caucus, and Councilman Schuster had requested tonight as well, that Solicitor Hayes look into the laws that we have on the book in regards to ATVs, and maybe what we can do to better enforce them, or add more teeth to them. So we'll take a look at that.
Absolutely.
The other thing, I had a conversation today with, briefly with Mrs. Reed regarding Third Avenue. Before this whole pandemic started to occur, I was in constant contact with the residents of Third Avenue regarding truck traffic. I received a message today from the gentleman who was leading the charge over there in regards to this issue, and it still is a major issue, and it's a major nuisance to that neighborhood. So I had asked Mrs. Reed if she would send correspondence again to the mayor, the DPW, and the city engineer, and to copy the police chief, Carl Graziano, on it as well, basically to try to see if we can come up with some sort of solution, and to do an assessment of that area once again. So hopefully that will be taken care of. I also got a call in regards to a gentleman who was attacked by a pit bull in the Hill Section. He had relayed to me really a horrific story of a dog that is kind of terrorizing the neighborhood. He requested that council revisit the laws that we have on the book. I had sent him the memo that Solicitor Hayes had provided to us when Mr. Spindler had requested something similar. So what he had suggested, and what we're, maybe we'll have a discussion on in the next few weeks, is requiring dangerous dogs to wear muzzles when they are on a public street. This is something that he is pushing for. Again, it's not something we're going to make a decision on tonight or anything, but I just wanted to let everyone know that he probably will be reaching out to all of you. So that is an issue that he is stating that several people in the Hill Section are concerned about as well. In regards to the polling...
I received the same complaint from that gentleman, and I instructed him to actually, you know, do public comment in the form of an email, so we can actually get this process started. Sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
Sorry, I'm going to jump in here, too. Now, was that breed specific, or was it just any dangerous dog?
I can't even remember, to be honest with you. Maybe, yeah, I think it was pit bulls, but I forgot you weren't on council when we had that memo, Tom. I'll forward it to you, so you can take a look at it. But yeah, it's, you know, it's definitely an issue, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll forward that over to you.
To jump back to that, the ATV piece, the neighbor said that up there on East Mountain Road, that the concrete barriers are open enough that the vehicles can get in there. I don't know if it's in the city's purview to move those barriers, or whose property that is, but that might be a fix to that situation there, just finding out whose property that is to move those.
Right, that's a good idea.
I do believe that that property is privately owned, and I don't know, I know the barriers that Mr. Schuster is talking about, and it sort of didn't stop ATVs, but it stopped, you know, like, a Jeep or something from going back that way. But I believe it's privately owned, and I don't know if the city had something to do with putting those there in the first place, or if the property owner just did that on their own. So maybe we can look into that, too.
Yeah, and some of the video I had was trucks and Jeeps, like several of them, like a convoy going back at night with their headlights.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and the last thing that I had was in regards to the letter that we received, or were copied on today, in regards to changing polling places, one in North Scranton, one on East Mountain, and the firehouses. I actually just received an email from Stephanie Pisco, the mayor's chief of staff. They had been in communication with the Bureau of Elections from the county, and the reason for their request for those changes was because of the coronavirus. They did not want people in those firehouses with employees in them voting. So they suggested the use of other properties nearby. So I'm not really sure where it's at, but that was the reasoning, the reasoning for that. So we'll follow up on that, I guess.
Yeah, I know, there were some changes in some polling places. I did look at the county site, where I saw that, say, for example, the Boys and Girls Club on Ash Street, I think, I think they were going to be voting at the county building, and several of those polling places were going to vote at the county building. School Board President Katie Martin just sent me, I'm going to forward it to you now, but it's from the Department of State, and the school district got that correspondence from the Department of State, I think stating that they had to open for Election Day. So I don't know, and looking at that, it also has municipal buildings, township buildings, things of that nature. So it might be just a possibility those buildings would be open for that day.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you. 5B, for introduction of resolution, appointment of Amber Viola, 1512 Ross Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18509, to the position of Director of Human Resources, effective May 18, 2020.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was frozen?
You there, Bill?
No, you were frozen.
Sorry, guys.
First and second.
Did I freeze again? Hold on. Okay, am I good now?
Yes.
Okay, so we had a, somebody seconded that, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, okay. On the question?
Yes, sorry, on the question, I would just like to say, I know that Ms. Viola had applied for a vacant council seat previously, and she clearly has an interest in city government. I think she'll be able to utilize her skills well in this position, so I'm happy to see that. We found an HR director, I know that it took quite a bit of time, and I'm glad that we finally got in here. So I'm just happy to see that we found a great person for the position.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Thomas A. Preambo, 510 Dean Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18509, to the position of Director of the Department of Public Works, effective May 25, 2020.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I just want to congratulate Mr. Preambo on his appointment, and I want to thank Mr. Gallagher for all the work that he's done over the past few years as the DPW Director. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution, appointment of Eileen Cipriani, 117 Washington Avenue, West Wyoming, Pennsylvania 18644, to the position of Executive Director of the City of Scranton's Office of Economic and Community Development, effective May 18, 2020. Ms. Cipriani will be replacing Mary Pat Ward, who was serving as Executive Director.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I'm going to be voting for this appointment tonight, and I'll also be voting in the next piece of legislation to grant the residency waiver for several reasons. First, in the past, I have stated my concern with hiring individuals who do not reside in the city. I'm taking a different position today for the following reasons. First, by all accounts, the United States may be entering into one of the worst recessions since the Great Depression of the 1930s. The coronavirus pandemic has had an absolutely devastating, debilitating effect, not only on the health of our people, but on their livelihood and our economy. Just today, as Mrs. Cipriani stated in the caucus, there was an article in the Scranton Times, which stated that Lackawanna County's website crashed yesterday when they offered a digital application for business relief grants. People are desperate for help. At no time in the city's history have we needed a more qualified, competent, and most importantly, experienced individual to lead our Office of Economic and Community Development. As a city, we all know that we're staring down the barrel of unprecedented economic challenges. When Lackawanna County moves from a red to a yellow phase, whenever that is, there will most likely be many businesses which have closed that will not be able to reopen. This presents a challenge in terms of lost jobs and revenue that the city receives, for example, business privilege and mercantile tax and earn income tax revenue. We must give the mayor and her administration the tools to be able to have a chance at recovery. We need the best person for the job, not somebody's cousin, not somebody's brother, sister, or uncle. We need someone who knows how to work with the business community, to come up with plans and strategies to actually foster growth. The city is going to need someone in the important position of OECD Director, who has already built relationships throughout the state and with the governor's office and state legislature, someone who has experience navigating the grant process. Every municipality in the state will be competing for the same funding, the same grants, and the same resources. It is crucial, it is crucial, that the city of Scranton is competitive, because many times in the past, we have not been. Ms. Cipriani's resume is impressive. The former Deputy Secretary for Workforce Development for the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry, former Director of the State Workers Insurance Fund, Special Assistant for Strategic Initiative in the Department of Labor and Industry, Master's Degree in Organizational Management, and Degrees in Leadership Development and Project Management. She clearly, clearly has the background, qualifications, and experience to do the job. The waiver process was put in place for these specific situations in which the city would face unique challenges, and I don't think anyone will disagree with me when I say that we are in an extremely unique position. And trying to come out on the other side of the devastation of this coronavirus pandemic is going to require not only council working together with the OECD Director, but it's going to require someone who actually has experience, someone who actually has the qualifications. Over the past six years, I've guided my decisions based on what I think is best for our city. After reviewing the resume, after understanding the unique situation we're in, this is in the best interest of the city, and that's why I'll be voting for the appointment, and I'll also be voting for the waiver. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction into its proper committee signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
No? Or opposed, rather? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction of resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to waive the residency requirements for Eileen Cipriani in her capacity as Executive Director of the Office of Economic and Community Development for the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Mrs. Reed?
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed with council number 7, 2020, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the Department of Justice BA-FY20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program, a grant in the amount of $64,162 awarded to the City of Scranton Police Department to be used for the purchase of supplies and equipment to respond to, prevent, and protect against the spread of coronavirus.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and to move item 6A to seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question? Yes, on the question, I, I made this request last week just for the simple fact that this funding would help our police department, and in terms of the emergency that we're finding ourselves in, it doesn't make sense to delay this for another week. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, Billy is Chairman of Public Safety. I also echo your comments. I mean, our police force needs every tool available to battle this pandemic and behind the front lines. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption. Resolution number 30, 2020, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an addendum to the cooperation agreement binding between the City of Scranton and the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs to further amend the cooperation agreement to permit the Scranton Police Department's Force Entry Tactical Team to move all explosive entry, training operations, and activities to the new location depicted in Exhibit A1, and cease to use the previously approved area of the Leach Range property located in Newton Township and South Abington Township.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chairman, for the Committee of Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, formerly 6A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, file with council number 7, 2020, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the Department of Justice BA-FY20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program, a grant in the amount of $64,162 awarded to the City of Scranton Police Department, to be used for the purchase of supplies and equipment to respond to, prevent, and protect against the spread of coronavirus.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chairperson for the Committee of Public Safety, I recommend final passage of 7B.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, this might be slightly off task, but in the emergency declarations that we've received, a few weeks ago, I did ask about, in those declarations, it does say that money over $21,000, it's, I mean, it's given the city the permission to purchase and procure items, lease, things like that. And I requested whether we had used that emergency declaration to purchase anything. At the time, I think the answer was no. Could I make another request to see if the city has purchased anything with that proclamation?
Yeah. Anyone else on the question? Ms. Carrera, roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. Before we adjourn the meeting, just so I'm clear, because I don't know if my audio was choppy, when we voted on the appointment of Mrs. Cipriani, Solicitor Hayes, that went three to two in favor of Mrs. Cipriani, correct? You're muted, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, it was five, it was five zero.
Or five zero, I'm sorry. And so, my question now is, so that's moving towards next week for a final vote on the appointment. However, there was no second on the waiver. Right, so? Where do you go?
That the sec, the 5E would have, would have failed because there wasn't, there was no second.
Right, so how does that affect the appointment now, if the appointment goes through next week?
So the appointment, appointment, the appointment could be effectuated and passed, and become, be effective after next week's meeting, however, the waiver, it would be without a waiver. Residency waiver, so in other words, Mrs. Cipriani would be permitted to to serve in that capacity for six months, or until, would be allowed to obtain residency for, within six months.
She would be able to what? I'm sorry, I missed a lot.
Obtain residency in the city within six months of her appointment.
Okay. All right, if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.